I'll call the meeting to order. It's the December 15th meeting. We will note that all commissioners are present. Mr. Kessel is absent due to family medical emergency. Mr. Coling, are there any changes to the order of business?
Mr. President, there is one addition to the agenda. I believe a copy of it has been placed at your tables. It is a first addendum to the Pinecrest subdivision planned unit development agreement. We'd request that that would be added to the agenda for approval.
And where would you add that?
I think we can add it under Administration under Tab 4.
So we'll just make that Item L? Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, would there be a motion to include or approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
I'll move. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go to the Tab 4, the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have is city commissioner committee assignments. And Mr. Coling will introduce that.
Mr. President and commissioners, with a new year quickly upon us, we wanted to review the city commissioner committee assignments that you each have. Schedule of them is in your packet. These assignments, for the most part, are at your discretion. You can choose to attend and be a part of what committees and boards you choose to be. Unless there are any changes to this, or you would like to make any adjustments to it, we'd just request that you would make a motion to confirm the committee assignments as they are listed in the schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Is there any commissioner that wishes to change their assignments?
The only difference I see on this one is that Mr. Steiner is actually on the Stark County Plan and Zoning Board, and you have that under my name. Carson's actually under that one. Or am I looking at... Oh, that's last year's. Am I looking at one?
It's showing Mr. Jackson and Mr. Altman, and you're saying it's Mr. Jackson and Mr. Steiner?
We're talking Stark Development.
Yep.
Is correct.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, no. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
I got it then.
Are we good?
Yep, we're good.
Any other comments? If not, then Mr. Coling requested a motion confirming the committee assignments. Would there be such a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. That brings us to Item B, which is city boards and committees. And Mr. Coling will also introduce that.
Thank you, Mr. President and commissioners. In your packet is a schedule of the various commissions and boards that the city has established for urban forestry, special assessment, the public library, and so forth. These are just the names of individuals whose terms are expiring and whether or not they desire reappointment. So we do have two individuals, Jeff Anderson and Peg Anderson, who would desire reappointment to the Urban Forestry Board. Dorothy Renner, who would desire appointment, reappointment to the Dickinson Public Library Board. And Scott Bolinger, who would desire reappointment to the Board of Adjustment. Rand Killian desired reappointment to the Civil Service Commission. Also listed in the schedule are some of our members who do not desire reinstatement or reappointment to the various boards. Would ask that you would entertain a motion to make the appointments and reappointments as listed in the schedule. We do have some of these boards listed on our website for those individuals within the community who may be looking for a way to be of service to the community. We are actively soliciting applications for each of these boards. Be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Coling? So the motion would be to make the board and committee appointments as listed here in the packet. Anybody desire to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion now about any of these appointments? Any concerns or anything? All right. If there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so the motion carries. And I would just echo what Mr. Coling said. We have a number of openings on these commissions and committees and boards. If there's anyone in the public, as Mr. Coling said, that would desire to serve, you can contact Mr. Coling or Mr. Kessel. They'd be more than happy to help you out here. You can go to the website and perhaps learn more about these. But we do need some volunteers to help fill these positions. That brings us to Item C, which is the 2015 fee schedule. You have that in your packet, and Mr. Coling will further introduce it.
Mr. President and commissioners, as you stated, this is a proposed 2015 fee schedule. It is, as you see, quite extensive. There are a number of fees and other items that the city does impose for the, for city services, utility rates, and the like. We did ask each of the departments to go through their individual budgets and fees and suggest any revisions or eliminations of fees or increases where they may be necessary. One of the fees that is going up in this proposed fee schedule is the usage rate for water utilities. We did receive an increase from Southwest Water for the amount that they charge the city for potable water. That increase was, I believe, 34 cents per thousand gallons. And this fee schedule transfers that cost on to city utility customers as well, passing along that Southwest Water increase. There are also water connection fees that are imposed on this fee schedule as well, and those are consistent with what was recommended by KLJ in the Water Master Plan and the Water Utility Study that they did for us earlier this year. I'd be happy to take any questions about the fee schedule if you have them.
The water utility fee, does it also have an increase in it for the infrastructure buildout that we've had?
It does, Mr. President, in terms of the connection fees. The connection fees are either newly established in this fee schedule or increased in this fee schedule to take care of the infrastructure construction cost for most of the infrastructure that is included in our capital improvement plan.
So connection fee would be for a new property?
Correct.
So an existing property is the only rate increase they're seeing, then, is the increase from Southwest Water?
There would be a small base rate increase for your existing customers as well.
Okay. And that base rate increase, that's to offset the new water lines and storage tanks and that type of thing?
Correct.
And we increased our wastewater rates earlier in the year. Are there any increases in wastewater rates here?
There are no changes in this fee schedule to the wastewater rates from those you approved earlier this year.
In terms of other fees, are there, are there any other fees where the increases might be considered significant that you'd want to highlight?
I don't believe there's any others that would require highlighting. There are some increases just based on inflationary rates and that sort of thing. Our fees for burials do go up a little bit in this, in this fee schedule. And some of our miscellaneous rates for copy charges and charges for production of city maps and those sorts of things. But no other fee increases, I think, that are substantial within this fee schedule.
Other questions?
The one I was going to bring up was the burial fees, but I think that's a direct result of bids that were received. Is that not true?
It is. Commissioner Jackson, we have advertised several times for cemetery contractors to take care of our burials and digging within the cemetery, excavation within the cemetery. We haven't been able to enter into a contract with any of the bidders at this point. And I believe we're looking at purchasing a piece of equipment that will allow city staff to conduct that excavation in-house. Mr. Zurov, I think, has been more involved than I have in purchasing that equipment and tasking some staff for it. Mr. Zurov may have some comments.
We met and looked at what direction we can go with the burials, and we're looking at a track loader and a trailer, purchase that. And currently, we're looking at doing it in-house with the purchase of that and the addition of our approved facility operators.
Track loader?
Yes. A mini track loader that can get in there. That was recommended by Denny. And looking at the cemeteries, it would float on top, and those mini excavators would seem to be the best.
And, Mr. President, Commissioner Jackson, if I can say too, our buildings and ground staff has been in contact with the local funeral directors regarding those fees, and also with other area cemeteries in other cities, Bismarck and Minot, to check their fees. These fees appear to be in line with what those communities have as well.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding the 2015 fee schedule?
Move to approve, Mr. President. No, second.
We have the motion, the second. Other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Good, Item D, which is the 2015 liquor license renewals. Mr. Coling, anything you'd like to say about these?
Mr. President and commissioners, there are only two changes to the licensees for 2015. We did not receive applications for a new liquor license from Wildcat Pizzeria or from Pizza Ranch. So those two entities would not be licensed to sell alcohol after the first of the year. All of the other licensees that you see on there have paid their fee and submitted their application for a renewal of their liquor licenses, and we would request a motion to approve the liquor license schedule as is in your packet.
Mr. Coling, any concerns that either of the two that haven't renewed, that it's just an oversight on their part?
From one of the entities, we were informed that they did not desire to renew their liquor license. They just didn't have the sales to warrant it. And the other, we did write a letter to them specifically informing them that they did not file an application and haven't received anything back from them. So appears to be their intent to cease alcohol sales, too.
Any other questions or comments? So would there be a motion to approve the 2015 renewals as presented to us?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Item E, 2015 tobacco license renewals. Mr. Coling?
Mr. President and commissioners, again, there is a schedule in your packet of all of the liquor license holders that have returned applications for 2015. There is one change that I would make to your packet. The schedule that you have indicates that Walmart did not return an application. We have since received their application. So we would request that Walmart be approved for a tobacco license for 2015 as well. The other two entities on there did not return applications, and we are in the process of making sure that they are informed that they're not licensed to sell tobacco in 2015 as well. Otherwise, we would request approval of the license schedule in your packet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners? Would there be a motion to approve those as listed with the addition of Walmart?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll hear the HR monthly report. Mrs. Dominick?
Good evening, Mr. President and commissioners. Top of the list on the Hiring Journal is police officers. We have two openings currently. We are in the background phase of the last opening that we just interviewed for. But even if those do go through, we still have two openings for police officer. Firefighter, we did hold interviews for the four positions that we have opened for 2015. Offers were made. We're still in the background phase. We had a real good, very qualified group of applicants for that opening. Right now, we have, in our sanitation department, we have an opening for a scale attendant, a sanitation laborer, actually, two laborers, and two operators in sanitation. We had one round of interviews that didn't go very well. We reopened the position, and that actually closes today. So we'll take a look at those applicants and see if we can get some interviews going next week. Street operator, we've got two positions open right now in street. We're kind of holding off a little bit. It seems like right now, over the holidays, is a tough time to get applicants, so we're holding off for a little bit. We'll get that opened up real soon. Communication specialist, we filled two positions recently, but have another two positions to fill. We'll be doing interviews later this week for that. Water utility operator, we've had one position open for quite some time, have not been able to have any luck with that. However, we did just do an interview and made an offer that was accepted today, but that employee can't start until first part of March. So we're going to hold off for a little while and wait for him. Chief engineering technician, we held some interviews on that and are going to reopen that position. Interim assistant city engineer, I think we all know that Loretta Marshick was appointed to that position. Accounting manager, we had that position open recently, did not find any qualified applicants. However, we, we still have one more applicant that we're going to be interviewing, and we'll see how that one goes. Custodian position has been filled at the Library Museum, and I think that's all we've got right now for custodian. Library assistant for the limited hour positions, those have all been filled. Part-time museum program assistant, we did just extend an offer on that one last week, so still in the background phase. Fleet shop technician, that position closes today, I believe. Facility operator, we had two positions for 2015. We did fill one of the positions, and we'll have to reopen, re-advertize for the other one. GIS technician and the engineering project manager, both new positions for engineering, and we, that position, those two positions just closed, and we'll begin the interviews, hopefully, next week on those. Any questions on any of those positions?
Excuse me. Any questions for Mrs. Dominick? Did you receive many applicants for either the GIS or the engineering project?
Unfortunately, we did not. I guess all it takes is one. We had some good qualified applicants for both of them, so we'll see how that goes. But we did not have a good number.
Okay. Any else have comments or questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay. And I have the next item as well.
Oh, you do. We have some job descriptions.
Yes. First one is the planning director. As you know, with the exit of Mr. Cortan, our community development director, we have restructured the department and will not fill the position as a community development director. We're looking at a planning director. So some of the reports that did report to Mr. Cortan have changed. So the Buildings and Sites Department and Forestry Department will now report to Public Works. Building Inspection Department will stand on its own, and so it'll just be planning. With the rewriting the job description, then, this position dropped a grade level due to not having all those departments reporting to the position. So we have taken this job description to civil service, and they have approved it. It will be an exempt position in Class Four, in Class Five. Any questions on that?
Okay. Any, any comments or questions? Anything on the job description that you may have concerns about or questions about? So not the, the motion would then be to approve the job description for the planning director?
So moved, Mr. President. No, second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Second job description is for the safety and training coordinator. As you know, this is a new position for 2015. It will fall under the HR department. Under Attorney Coling will be the supervisor. We have taken this job description to civil service. They have approved it. This will also be an exempt position. Will be in Class Four, Level Four. Any questions on this job description?
Any comments regarding the job description? Concerns, questions?
We have this position in, in the budget next year. I remember talking about it.
Yes, you do.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll go to Item H, and this is a consulting services agreement with Mr. Cortan, and Mr. Coling will introduce this.
Mr. President and commissioners, as you heard and know, Mr. Cortan will be leaving us as our community development director. He's been an integral part of our staff, and we will miss that service as he leaves here. Because of the break in service, we did want to retain Mr. Cortan in some limited capacity so that we can have an adequate transition of files and developments and retain some of the knowledge that Mr. Cortan brings to the city. This consulting services agreement would allow the city to engage Mr. Cortan as a consultant on a temporary, limited time basis. It would be up to a maximum of 10 hours per week, and Mr. Cortan would be compensated equivalent to his, his current compensation rate with the city. Again, this is just a temporary nature. We anticipate as soon as a full-time planning director would be brought on staff that this consulting services agreement would no longer be necessary. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them. Otherwise, city staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments or questions? Not? Is there a motion regarding this agreement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Mr. Ingram, how, how much time do you think you need?
Forty-five seconds.
Okay. Then we'll go to the museum event report.
I just wanted to stop tonight and tell you what a great experience we had on December 5th with our first annual Aunt Ethel's Attic Auction. Say that three times. We've raised about $11,000 for the museum by selling all of the, all but three of the canvas prints that we had produced for the exhibits over the last two years. We had a great crowd. We had a great auctioneer. Al Shook did it all for free for us and was able to get some remarkable bids on what are, I think, some remarkable pictures. So I just wanted to stop and say, say that, and if you had any questions?
Might be more money than they've raised in the history of the museum, all on one night.
On one night? I, yeah, I think maybe.
You did awesome.
So, all right.
Well, thank you. All right. It's five o'clock. We have a timetable agenda item for five o'clock, and Mr. Zurov, are you going to introduce this one, or is it Mr. Coling?
I can, I can introduce. I'll, I'll start. Mr. Bellum?
Qualheim.
Bellum is here. I guess I'll give you a little history on it. On August 15th, we had the massive rainfall event. With that rainfall event, we had numerous sewer issues, one being inundated of a couple of stations. And, and with that, we had, I think, eight to 10 possible submittals for sewer backups. And I think we did have three for sure, and Miss, and Dennis was, was one of them. With the number of sewer backups for this, on this event, I did contact our North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. They did do an investigation on this and found that the city was not responsible, but there were some other development areas that they feel that the water and the inundation of the sewers happened. And so we're, we're pursuing that. But on, on his house particularly, he feels that we had, there was more than a $10,000 backup claim, and so that's why he's here, here tonight, to request additional funds for that sewer backup for that event, August 15th. And Mr. Coling might have more on that.
Mr. President and commissioners, there is a schedule that the claimant has, has provided to you of damages claimed from this sewer backup. Currently, the approval that has been given by the city commission under our sewer backup ordinance is $10,000 that we paid, or the city pays up to $10,000 of a sewer backup claim. There is language within that ordinance that allows the city commission to waive that limitation for particular circumstances. And in the past, I believe the city has done that. On at least one occasion, I'm aware of, the city did waive that $10,000 limitation. Other than that, I don't believe there's any other introduction that I can give.
All right. Well, thank you for the introductory comments, and Mr. Qualheim, welcome, and... All right, well, thank you for the introductory comments, and Mr. Qualheim, welcome, and we're prepared then to hear your comments.
Well, Mr. President, Commissioners, on August 8th of this year, my wife and I celebrated our 50th wedding anniversary, and as part of the celebration, we took our family on Alaskan cruise. We left Seattle on the 15th of August, and of course, we got out of cell phone service in a hurry, so when we got to Juneau on Sunday morning, our cell phones were lit up and text messages and everything else about our house being flooded. We have a dog sitter that comes in to take care of our dogs when they're gone, and she came on Friday night, and she looked down the steps and she noticed this artificial tree had been tipped over, and she thought maybe our dog had gone down it for some reason, and so she went down and she stepped off the bottom step and into sewer water. And she called a couple of nephews that she had on, Action Cleaners first on that night, and then the next morning, she has a couple nephews in town. They hauled all the stuff up into our garage, and with exception of a few things, our big screen TV and things like that, they couldn't get up. Had at least four and a half inches of water in our basement, and the reason I know that is we have an old Sentry safe that has the wheels on the bottom, and the safe, you know, the, the cavity inside is four and a half inches off the ground, and our wedding album had been put in that safe, and so we lost our wedding album also. Things you can't and we can't replace, I understand that, but that's just showing how much water we had in our basement, sewer water. Action Cleaners was there, and they cleaned up. They did a darn good job, except in our furnace room. When we got back, there were still feces and toilet paper and things like that in our furnace room that my wife had to clean up and bleach and everything else, so she got that taken care of. On that Monday when we got back, August 25th, I think it is, Jeff with the city came over and he brought the claim forms and things and explained the process to us about the, the $10,000 automatic or basically automatic, and then if there was anything over that, we had to come, I had to come to the city commission to request the additional funds to cover our additional costs over that. He also told me that there is a, and, and the only thing we have in our basement is the furnace room and a, and a floor drain. We don't have a bathroom in the basement. And he also told me about anti-backup valve to put in, so that Monday, I went over to Newby's Ace Hardware and I got one and put it in. If I would have known about it, I would have had one before that, but I never knew there was such an animal existed. Now, I understand that part of the building code, they put a flapper valve or something in the ba, in the sewer system. I think that's what, what they're doing now. We lost a lot of things. I mean, our furniture down there, upholstered furniture because of the depth of the water sucked, wickered up water into the furniture itself, and it's sewer water, and Dion with Action Cleaners said that he wouldn't even try to, you know, to clean it. He said, "It's not worth the cost." He said, "Get rid of it. You're probably going to end up with mold and things like that in there." And we did end up with some mold in some of the things we had under the stairwell that they didn't carry out. My dad's trunk, his steamer trunk that he brought over from Norway in 1912 was one of the fatalities there, and my wife's wedding dress and her mother's wedding dress, you know, sentimental things that we can't replace, but we've done, you know, what we think is right in the repairs. I did all of the sheet rock work that had to be done. I did it for a living for 15 years, many years ago, so I was able to do that. I don't think we could have gotten anybody to come in and do a small job like that. I called a couple carpenters about doing the, the oak doors. We have six panel oak, solid oak doors down there, and I called one and, and he didn't return my call until the Thursday after. I called him on a Monday, and he finally called me back on Thursday, and he said he couldn't do anything about it. The job is too small, so. We got a friend from Bismarck that came out and helped me hang all the doors and everything else. The doors, the, the bottom of the doors, the jams, of course, are partially particle board, the backside, they swelled up so big that the doors couldn't open, but the, the solid panel oak doors just split at the seams in the bottom from being in the water. We live in a twin home. We're on the west side of it. Leon and Linda Ruston live on the east side. They also had water, but not nearly to the extent that we did. The dog sitter's the one that alerted them that there was water in their basement, possibly two, and the, their doors didn't hardly even get wet, so they probably didn't have more than inch and inch, you know, probably an inch of water in theirs, but for some reason, we got the brunt of it. And you've got an outline of the, the costs that I had there to repair things, some of it, you know, like, we had this leather furniture in the basement, couch, a love seat, an ottoman replaced with a, a couch and two chairs, so we didn't replace everything that we had down there, so. If you have looked through the, the claim, if you have any questions, I'd sure appreciate being able to answer them, or if you don't, I would appreciate if you would see fit to help us out and make us whole. Any questions?
Mr. Qual, I have a question.
Sure.
Do, do you have sewer backup insurance, private insurance?
I do, but I didn't think that I should claim on that and pay the rest of my life the increased premium that it was going to cause. You know, we didn't have anything to do with this. It was caused by the...
You didn't file, you didn't file a claim?
No, not yet. No, no. I can if I want, but I'm not gonna if I get paid here.
Does anybody have any other questions?
How large is your basement? What's the square foot?
Uh, 650 square feet, I think it is. In the, in the claim, Dion said, what, 547 square feet of carpet and padding and stuff, but we also have a storeroom and a furnace room down there, so it's 650 square feet, I think it is.
Okay, so my only question is on the carpeting?
Mm-hmm.
For a 600 square foot area for $8,250, it just seems like a lot.
Okay, I can explain that. When we moved in, we bought it brand new. We picked all the carpets and everything else. Our carpet was the same throughout the whole house, and when it come up the steps, it all ties together. That carpet was no longer available through, we got it through floor to ceiling, and they no, no longer make that brand or that style of carpet, or color of carpet, whatever. So, what we did is to make it whole, just like you would take a car to a body shop, you wouldn't want a different color fender coming off, you know, on a repair, so we thought it was only right that we should be able to have matching carpet throughout the house. We didn't have to replace the pad upstairs.
So, you carpeted the whole house?
Yeah, we put the lower grade carpet in the basement and medium grade on the main floor to make it the same just the, the way it was.
Mrs. Zurov, did you say Insurance Reserve Fund denied liability on the city?
Correct.
You know, and that's one point. The, the other, I, I guess I do want to bring up, we do charge, you know, residents for a sewer backup fee, and that was increased to 50 cents, I believe, a month for, you know, for that, and I'm not, I don't know the history of that, but they do pay for a sewer backup. And, you know, whether that's li, you know, the city's liable or not, we are, we do have that fee.
Yeah, Mr. Steiner and I would be very familiar with the history. We've both been on the commission the same amount of years, just over 14 years, and, and when we got on the commission and dealt with sewer backup issues from time to time, here's what I remember about those issues. One, not everybody has sewer backup insurance, and the way things worked back then, and I think they still do, Mr. Steiner, you'll, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but you generally have to specifically ask for the sewer backup rider when you get your home insurance.
Right.
Because you, I think a good agent would, would inform, you know, his clients that this is something you should have, and even though it might cost a little extra, but what we learned was not everybody had this insurance. So, you'd have a sewer backup issue whether it was, say, directly the fault of subsidy action or a rainstorm. We decided that we would have, and at that time, I think it was a 25 cent a month fee, like a no insurance fee, or not no insurance, no fault.
No fault.
No fault fee. To protect those who didn't have insurance, we never intended that it would be your first dollar coverage, and we never intended it for it to be that, you know, we would cover any amount, and I think initially, when we started out, it was probably less than $7,500 per occurrence. We did raise it to $7,500, and, and now it's, it's $10,000. But we didn't mean for it to cover someone who has insurance. It's, it's, it's a fee that, that the whole city pays for those that don't have it, or say, those that suffer maybe a real catastrophic loss, or they have high deductibles. I'm, I guess, I'm a little reluctant myself to, I guess, support your request for $20,000 when you haven't even filed a claim with your insurance.
All I have is up to $5,000 on money. My neighbors Rustons didn't have any, any coverage on theirs.
It's, and it's something we, we've talked about for years at our city commission meetings, hoping that those who watch Channel 19 would see it and say, "Hey, do I have coverage or not?" It's a good thing to have coverage for because in the course of the last 14 years, there've been a number of events that have caused backups, and we almost had a catastrophic event when we had the ice storms in 2005 or '07. I can't remember which year it was, but when it shut down our whole city for days in some parts of the city without electricity, we had a difficult time running our lift stations. Catastrophic event like that, we could have flooded, you know, many, many basements. But anyway, it, that's, that's really what it's there for. We would expect that you would file, or at least I do, that you would file with your insurance company first and, and see what, what they say.
I have up to $5,000 there.
And, but you haven't filed?
No.
Well, I would encourage you to file.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with President Johnson. You know, I, I could see some support once you file for your $5,000. Getting back to the ordinance, you know, the backup, when the city's not liable, as indicated here, I, I don't know how much additional I could support. I, I don't think I could support additional $15,000.
Okay.
That's your five.
Yeah, Mr. Strom said with the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund called me, and this is what Gary Zurov was talking about. He called me and told me that the city was not liable. He tracked it down, but he said he had a meeting with somebody in the city that, being that Captain Liam Jackson represented the engineering department, that after he looked at their insurance and everything else, that the city should go after Meyer contracting because they were at fault on this, and they also had, there were funds that had been withheld on that project, he said, "That's to my favor," and I've never heard if they've been pursued or not. So, did anything come, I don't know. That's, they're the ones that are at fault. Insurance Reserve Fund said that.
Why would they say Meyer contracting was at fault? Was it landscaping issues?
No.
Mr. Steiner, when they did the investigation, when North Dakota Insurance Reserve came and did the investigation, they felt, and same with our water utilities, they tried to trace the, where the, all the inflows were coming on the August 15th rainstorm. And at that time, the Willer Circle, I believe, was the one under construction, and it just happened to be that that was where the, the elevations were down and they had, you know, they hadn't brought up the street yet. Manholes were there, storm manholes and sanitary manholes were a normal construction project. I mean, they had everything on a normal construction right, but all the drainage came right through there. The storm event inundated that street, and that's where they feel all of the rainwater came into the sanitary sewer system and inundated the lift station, thus caused the backup of multiple houses.
But again, what would be Myers' negligence?
I, I'm not, I don't know about negligence, but that, that's where the Insurance Reserve Fund and Water Utilities feel that that's where the water came from, and that that's why it wasn't the city's negligence, I guess, or city's responsibility.
It wasn't, it's not unusual in these new development areas or current areas where when you get an abundance of rainfall, that the water will run down from one to another to another, and eventually come out somewhere and, and jump a curb or jump a window sill or something like that. It's, it's hard to prove the negligence of someone like that, or developer, or when it comes to that. However, there are some developers that do not prepare their property correct, you know, for this type of situation, and I know we have city codes and so on for them to do so. I don't know if that's the issue here, but, you know.
The, the situation was discussed with KLJ there, you know, with the, on the project, and, and that's where it's at now. I believe they have discussed it with Meyer, and if that's, if there was fault by them, I mean, that, that's a whole nother area of the contract because it was a city project and Myers was under, under contract with the city at the
I'd make one other comment, not relative to whether or not the contractor was negligent, but another reason we have a limit on how much, you know, we would pay under most, you know, normal circumstances is we have no control over what you put in that lower level, any, any person, any family. I mean, some people store very little, some, like in your case, you stored some very valuable things, but we have no way of controlling that or assessing what the risk is for that type of thing. That's, that'd be another reason why we limit our liability. I mean, you know, this is kind of a way out analogy, but you know, if you own the Mona Lisa and put it down on the basement floor, we certainly wouldn't want to insure for that, you know.
There's no antiques or jewels or guns or anything like that that I'm, I'm asking either?
No, and I understand that, and, and what happened to you and your, your wife, that's a terrible thing. I mean, we don't, we recognize that, but at the same time, I, I don't think we can offer you or any other citizen, in a sense, you know, unlimited coverage here that, that was never intended to do that. It's intended to, to help. It's not intended to be first dollar. I think, you know, again, I'd just be repeating myself if I say anything more there, but Mr. Coleing, you and I had a brief conversation. You did mention the possibility maybe of filing a claim through the contractor's insurance company. Do you, do you think that's a viable possibility?
Mr. President, I think that's a possibility. We do have the, the engineer on the project coming in tomorrow to discuss this and, and discuss the claim process. We haven't made a determination at this point as to whether or not the contractor was negligent in, in preparing that site. That's something we'd have to do and run through the, the ordinary claims process under the contract, but I think there is the potential that there may be some viable claim there for the damages that the city would incur in paying out these stormwater claims.
Well, I had a, I had a discussion with Gary when this thing whole first started, and the reason that's taken me four months to come to you is that I told him, I said, "I didn't think the city should be responsible for paying the bill of something that was not caused by the city but by a contractor," and that all of the claims that came through this should have been grouped together, and that's what, the reason it kind of went to the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund.
Correct.
Because of our discussion about this, and that I'd agreed, it wasn't the city's fault. It was Meyer's fault that this happened. The, you know, in fact, I, I even went out to Meyer, I found where their office was, and I talked to a gentleman named Corey Elms, and asked him about it, and he said, well, he'd just gotten here, and he said, "I'll talk to the people that were here." He said, "They're in Maple Grove now," and that was about 11 o'clock, 11:30 one morning, and he called me back that afternoon and he said, "Dennis," he says, "I talked to him down there," and he said, "Uh, we're not at fault." He said, "We turned that project over to Willie Wynn, become the general contractor," and he said, "Besides that, our stuff wasn't even hooked up to the city water, their city system at that time. He says, "Your problem came from the project to the west of you," which is, I don't know what, over by that... what, over by that new pump station or whatever that one is called. And of course, that's where, the response I got from them.
Well, I guess I'll say one other thing about this program. We, several years ago, we recognized that it's hard to determine fault, cause and effect on these. We've had sewer backups for a number of reasons. Another common one sometimes can be if restaurants illegally dump their grease, you know, that'll, that can clog up any place. And so, the thoughts being that, you know, this sewer backup can happen to any of us. And therefore, if we all contribute, in this case, right now, fifty cents a month, six dollars a year into a fund, when it does happen to some of us, we can at least take a portion of that cost. And that's really what it's doing. So, I guess, you know, what my recommendation would be is you go back, you file with your insurance company. We have Mr. Coling meet with the engineers tomorrow to see if there really is a chance for a viable claim against a contractor. But I think the best case that would work out for you is if you get a five-thousand-dollar settlement from your insurance company. I know I would support, you know, a ten-thousand-dollar payment from the city to you.
But then I pay increased premiums the rest of my life.
Well, that's a risky take. I mean, if you get a windstorm here and it blows shingles off your roof, that's, I mean, we all have a risk of sewer backup.
Mr. President, as far as paying increased premiums for the rest of your life, our agency represents thirty, fifty companies, and we don't, not one of the companies would increase your premiums due to this type of a loss. I don't know who you're with or what, but in our case, you know, thirty, fifty companies we have, they would not say, we're increasing yours because of this loss. I will go one step farther. You file for your five, and the city adds ten. And looking at your carpet allowance here, that you put in eight-thousand dollars, and you mentioned that it goes up the steps in the next floor you replace, I don't think there would be a company that would say, we're going to replace that upper floor.
When we lived in Bismarck, my daughter dropped some Kool-Aid on her bedroom in the basement, and it was matched carpet all the way through the house.
I would agree on one part.
And the insurance company replaced it all?
But I doubt if they would go up the next story up here.
They did.
One and a half story and replace all the carpet.
Well, whatever.
Point of clarification.
I guess, you know, I've given my opinion and feelings, but there's four others here.
No, I would agree that you need to file with your insurance company. Ten thousand is what we have set for the president's for others. You know, if you'd had less damage, doesn't mean that you get full ten thousand. It's up to ten thousand. And it sounds like our attorney is willing to take it a step further for you to explore some other options with contractor insurance.
Can I wait until he finds out from?
I think you have to find out what your insurance company regards.
From Meyer?
Sure. I mean, that's up to you.
Well, I mean, is it going to happen, or you're working with it?
We have the meeting set up with the engineer tomorrow to discuss it. It'll have to be run through the claims process, so I, you know, as to whether you want to file with your insurance company, I think that's up to you. But we'll certainly talk about with the engineer and see if we can run something through the claims process on our side.
Okay. Good, thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here. I'm going to slip in the Dickinson Public Library Hours item and then go to the KLJ Water Utility Master Plan. I know that's going to take a while unless our museum director really wants to hear the Water Utility Master Plan. Rita, do you want, you want to, we'll do your item now?
Mr. President, commissioners, thank you. We are planning to change our hours effective January the first. I just would like to tell you a little bit about how we came about this. Before I went to Sean and to the library board, and I have taken it to both of them and received their approval, we did a use study to look at who's using our library and when and at what times. Part of the reason that we did this is that we are finding increased traffic at some times, and particularly in our children's area. During our evening and our weekend hours, we have very minimal staffing, generally only three for the entire building. And so, we're finding times where the supervision in the children's area is not what we would wish for it to be. So, we're looking at our staffing and saying, how do we amend that, particularly in the after-school hours? So, the studies we did, we did one that was just a Sunday to Sunday where we literally went through the building, a staff member did a physical count at, on the half hour, every hour throughout the entire day, how many people are here, what are they doing, approximately. Then we also did run some reports, and we have a report through the software that runs our gates, that comes in, that gives us our people counts for the year. And so, that just basically tells you how many people came through the doors and how many left through the doors during each hour of the day. What we found is what I expected, there's no hour where there's nobody there that we're open by any means. But there are times where our traffic is heavier than others. And so, in looking at that, what we, the proposal that I brought forward to Sean and to the library board is to close one hour earlier, Monday through Thursday, so that's to close at eight PM instead of nine, and then also to close on Sundays, and be able to take those staffing hours and move them into Saturdays and particularly into the after-school hours for extra staffing in the children's areas. So, our proposed hours then for the coming year would be Monday through Thursday from nine AM to eight PM, Friday, nine to six, which is the current Friday hours, Saturday, nine to five, and to be closed on Sundays.
What are your current Sunday hours right now?
One to four.
Are people using the library for other things than the traditional use of a library?
How do you define the traditional use of the library?
Well, I guess, you know, first of all, you have books and magazines and periodicals. You also have computers that people can use, public computers. You know, to me, that's traditional use. Are they using it for things other than that?
Like the drop-in daycare?
Well, there is something that we have struggled with, especially those kids that are at that age and time where they're just old enough that maybe they really don't need to go to daycare anymore, or there's not daycare and after-school programs available for them. So, we're talking about the very oldest, you know, maybe sixth graders, seventh and eighth graders, the kids coming from Hagan, right over just a couple blocks from us.
Are they using?
We do see a lot of that in the after-school hours.
Are they using it in ways that increase your security concerns?
I would say our security concerns are increased at every hour of the day that we're open at this point in time. But certainly, those kids, as far as supervision, some of them are busy doing homework, but many of them are socializing more than they're doing anything else. There are some that are clearly there to be somewhere while they're waiting for mom or dad to get off work. There is some of that, yes.
What are the numbers for your Sunday, one to four, average?
I've got my Sundays here in front of me, and we counted on two different Sundays. And the one day, we counted between thirteen or fifteen people in at any given hour, and the other, it was closer to twenty. I actually did work myself yesterday, and I would say we were around twenty to twenty-five people in the library hours throughout the day yesterday.
So, from one to four, you might have fifteen tops at any one hour?
At any one time, fifteen to twenty.
And you have three people on staff?
And we have three people on staff. But part of the issue with that, of course, is that it's a big building. And so, we have one or two people that are busy right there at the front desk and really have to be there. And our help issues, at least I would say from yesterday, a lot of it was just assisting people with using the computers. Our heaviest use of the library at any hour, and I could give you all of the categories and things that we looked at when we were counting, but you see any number of people on the computers, upstairs and down, people that are using our Wi-Fi, and then some that are checking out books, sitting and reading, children in the easy book section, some of them being read to by somebody, some of them playing with some of our literacy and learning games that we have on the tables and things there. And then during the after-school hours, of course, you do see the kids that are hanging out together, whichever way you would put it.
How did your library board, staff, everyone involved in this decision feel about giving up Sundays? That's probably the biggest thing I'm struggling with. So, what was the thought process behind that and the, I guess, the support behind being closed on Sunday?
You know, I went in prepared to have to really argue for that and was very surprised, and Scott could speak to it if he would like, he was there. But they were unanimously supportive. And part of that, of course, we were dealing with our incident logs of some of the security things we had dealt with in the last month, so they were looking at specific issues. And that helped them to see where I was coming from about wanting to increase my staff presence in those hours. But there really was nothing but support at the meeting, is that correct?
Yes, there was.
Mr. Coling, does this take commission action, or is this something that they and their advisory board have the authority to do?
Mr. President, the, there's no formal lines of authority on a decision such as this. I think what we're looking for is commission consent and approval, or if you do have concerns about it, to express those and allow staff to work through those.
And Mr. Decker, you, you're on the library board as our?
Yes, I am, Mr. President.
Do you, how do you feel about?
I think, the conclusion we came to at the meeting, that this was the best use for their man-hours, you know, over time, and their security concerns.
Anybody object to the changes?
You know, I would tend to defer to the staff. It was the Sunday thing that got my attention too, wondering about it.
Yeah.
Are the communities, do other communities keep their libraries open on Sunday?
Some do, some don't. I did, I wish I had it with me, and I do not, but I did do a staffing and hours comparison with other libraries around the state. And of course, it's very difficult to find the one that's the right one to compare to us. But what I would tell you is West Fargo, which is probably the closest to us in population, has significantly more staff. They are not open more hours than we are. They do not run a bookmobile or two outside sites as we do. So, for whatever that comparison is worth.
Well, I think it's good that you aired it this evening. But again, I think I would defer to the board, to the library, and if it's what you guys think you should do, I'm okay with that.
I would guess you'd be reactive if there is a public outcry that they want Sundays. You would revisit that issue at a later date too. So, it's, you guys are being proactive in trying to manage your facility, and the staff has come up with the decision, like you said. Sunday was the only thing that struck me, but.
Right. One thing that we are doing, of course, we're getting some signage out and putting it on our webpage, and we've prepared some bookmarks that we're giving out with everything we check out now. So, just to tell them both about some changes in our fees as well as the changes in the hours, so that hopefully people are not caught by surprise.
Yeah.
And then we'll see what we hear.
Okay.
Well, and life in the Bakken, whether you're a business here, or a traveler here, or a library, life in the Bakken is just a lot different than for those that live outside the Bakken. And I'm sure the oil impact has brought both good things, but also some challenging things that aren't so good to the library.
Absolutely. And we are aware that some of those people that may be displaced on a Sunday afternoon and our folks, that that's their time to use the computer, to keep in touch with family far away or something like that. We do have a lot of people doing resumes, applying for jobs and that sort of thing. But Sundays are Sundays in that last hour of the day, in our studies at least, are definitely our lowest traffic hour. So, if we're going to make a change, that seemed to be the logical place to do it.
I have no problem floating it on a trial basis. If we get a lot of complaints, I think you might have to address it again.
Okay. Well, I think you have a consensus here that you have support and.
Thank you.
And see how it goes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll go back to the timetable agenda, and we're going to hear a presentation on the Water Utility Master Plan, and Brant Malsum will make that. I'm going to step out so I can see the screen background.
Okay. Well, President Johnson, commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to bring you an update on your Water Utility Master Plan. If I did my calculations right, this is the second day of Christmas, so it should be two turtle doves, but instead I bring you your Water Master Plan. And I think it's a gift that's going to keep on giving. I think your staff will be able to use this document for a long time to come. This study really focused on two areas. It really focused on your water storage and your water delivery systems. Not that water supply isn't important, but I think you all understand that your water supply does come from the Southwest Water Authority. We are going to go a little later in the presentation, stop and kind of talk about a few things there and how that affects your community. This is kind of a continuation of things that got started as part of your comprehensive plan. And the plan is a technical document, but you have a staff that I think understands how to use a document like this. There's many copies that were delivered to the city, so feel free to stop and read one one day. But it is pretty technical in nature, and it has to be because it's certain things it's dealing with. The good thing is, you do have a plan. I think I've heard it earlier, that, you know, it's better to plan than not to plan. I certainly agree with that. I think plans help offset some uncertainty that you're dealing with, and I think, most importantly, it helps you control what your systems can look like as you go forward. And as with any plan, don't be afraid to adjust it if need be. As part of this effort, we really looked at four different timeframes or conditions existing two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and thirty-five, and full build conditions. In reality, it really focuses on the last three, because for all practical purposes, we have moved beyond existing conditions. And the focus of the document really starts with the two thousand and fifteen conditions, and this is what we use to make recommendations to the system, because many of the things that you see happening in your city will be online by the end of two thousand and fifteen, like your finished water pump station down by the water treatment plant, you're starting to see that come out of the ground already. Both east and west twenty-four-inch transmission lines are under construction. The new tower up north, you're starting to see it emerge above the trees. So, there's a lot of things in place that will be online in two thousand and fifteen supporting the system. Again, that's why we use that model to make recommendations to improve fire flows within your system today. And the two thousand and thirty-five conditions is really for consistency with your comprehensive plan, and you'll see some maps here in the future that point that out. And then the full build conditions, you know, that analyzes and provides evaluations of future conditions based on anticipated or logical growth areas, and we'll spend some times on those maps as well. Infowater was a software we used, very powerful tool. What I really like about it is based upon a GIS platform, so GIS information can be taken into the model, but it can also be taken out. And you're going to see examples of the maps that this software was able to generate. A lot of tools within that software, and I think we used all of them as we went through the analysis. The thing that I really like. The thing that I really like about this particular software, you all know you're getting a new SCADA system, or you'll be able to take data from what is collected on that new SCADA system and bring it right into this model. So we're able to actually create things that are happening in your system. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity. The City of Dickinson has what I'll define as a traditional water distribution system. You service, you provide domestic, commercial, industrial water uses, but you also provide fire flows. Because of that, a lot of your pipes and so forth have to be larger in order to do that. I think throughout the country, we're starting to see some changes that move away from some of this traditional. It's been pretty effective over the years, but it's the same old thing. How much pipe can you bury? How much storage can you build? How many pumping facilities can you have? But right now, there's no way to change what you have in place, so all the recommendations are based upon trying to improve your traditional system as we see it today. Analysis showed that from a pressure standpoint, things work pretty good in the city. Over the years, you've done a lot of modifications to help improve pressures throughout the city. So we aren't aware of any real major problem areas. A couple little isolated areas where you have some more of your hills and so forth. But again, nothing that really stood out from a pressure standpoint. Most of the deficiencies within the system are related to fire flows. You just aren't able to provide the quantity of flow that you guys have determined you need for your certain areas or types of structures, that sort of thing. Zoning is more like it. Some of the problems is with your system itself, a lot of six-inch pipe within your system that kind of hinders how much water you can actually move through the system. So through this modeling effort and using the 2015 model, we came up with recommendations on how to make improvements to the system. This is one of the first maps that we'll talk about, and it's generated through the Infowater software. Couple things to point out. This shows you what kind of problems we're seeing with some of our fire flows, especially within the core area of the city. I want you to kind of concentrate in these areas. Red is not good, green is good. Don't worry about the areas, the red you see here and here, because right there, the pumps are off, your high-service pumps are off. So we're not, in this particular map, we're not sending all the water through the pumps. So what we wanted to do now is look at ways that we can improve mainly the core area of the city. And what we did, this is exactly the same map as before. Here we have the aerial underneath it. It helps you see where you're at. But some of these maps like this make it just clearer to see certain things. So within the report itself, every one of the maps has it with the aerial and without the aerial. So again, this is basically the same map showing where you have some of the problems in the core areas of your city. These are some of the recommendations that came out of the modeling efforts, and you can see where some of these highlighted lines are and so forth. This is where we're recommending improvements to the size of the water mains to try to help take care of some of the fire flow issues. Here's a map now with those pipes in the system. You can see we have very little red within the core area of the city, so these are some of the improvements we can make to help increase the fire flow capabilities of the system. Then the next map we're looking at is a map that shows the piping based upon the 2035 conditions. And what we want to, and this, like I said, is this is consistent with what the things were developed during your comprehensive plan. These areas here were designated as some of the areas to be developed, and so we expanded the system to be able to take care of those areas. I think in a lot of places, this is still very consistent with what you're seeing out there. And so again, this is the 2035 conditions, and you can see that we haven't filled in all the city areas, so forth, and the next slide will do that. This will be our first example of a full build conditions. Here we've filled in the area north of the interstate and east of 10th Avenue East. We've continued to infill the areas out in the northwest part of the city, the north side and so forth. So this gives you a good idea of what your footprint could look like under full build conditions. And then full build conditions with the expanded west side. As I said earlier in our presentation on your west side study, we could see that the city was starting to grow more towards the west, so we were already starting to look at what we might need to do to supply water out into that portion of the city. And again, what the west side study did is it really helped decide what that might look like. And so again, then we were able to take that and put this into the model and everything else that goes along with analysis to trying to determine what we need to do to service this particular area that would grow. If you look at this, this is a large footprint of the city. Basically, this is your core today, and it's considerable enlargement, you know, so it could get to be a very large footprint someday in the future. As I said, the study really tried to focus on storage and your delivery system. There's a lot of ways to go about determining or estimating what storage should be provided in the system. And I'd just say by the book, it came up to about 15.8 million gallons for the full build-out conditions. In our mind, that still seems excessive. Part of that whole process, if you have other things in place, you can certainly go about looking at reducing that, and we did that. A lot of reasons why we reduced the storage that we felt you need in the system was because all the new pumping facilities will certainly have increased capabilities. We have standby power to make sure that the water can be delivered into the system. And there exists 6 million gallon reservoir next to the water treatment plant, and really, for all practical purposes, that provides emergency storage for both Southwest and the City of Dickinson. And I think you guys have good enough working relationship. If one or the other needs that water, I think you could make it available to each other. So those are the reasons why we felt we could really reduce the storage volume in the system. And based upon that and several considerations, we came up with recommending 7 million gallons of storage in the system. Today, you have about 3.8. So this is, you know, adding, you know, another 3.2 million gallons of storage out in your distribution system, and that's not including the 6 million gallons that exist down by the water plant. Another key reason that we like to kind of minimize the storage when we can is it has to do with water quality. Storage facilities is one of, it's kind of a prime area where you can start to have water quality issues because you get stagnation, you don't get good turnover in that water. And so we have less storage out there. We'll make sure we do everything we can to improve water quality. In your case, your water quality is really good, what you get from Southwest really provides good water. So I really don't anticipate water quality issues within your system, and especially if we kind of minimize the storage that's out there. This is just a table from the report itself, and just lists where the storage would be within the systems, and again, it totals up to that 7 million gallon.
Lee, you said we have 3.8 existing. Is that counting what's under construction, or is that truly existing?
I think it's existing.
And so I think we have under construction.
Take you to 4.8. We brought this map up again. This time, I want you to pay attention to where the purple triangles are. That's where we're trying to designate, or we feel that it would be a good location for the storage within the system. And again, this totals up to 7 million gallons. Basically, we're trying to move the water out to storage and let it come back in as Before we can get into talking about the delivery system and some of the recommendations for that, we need to start taking a good look at what the demands might be on the system. And we were able to develop what we felt the demands on the system would begin by the various conditions or timeframes. And this is based upon the anticipated land use, whether it's residential, commercial, that sort of thing. And that's how you come up with some of these average daily rates and also your peak rates for the water consumption. In 2015, we're looking at an average of about 2.3, and that's where we're at today with peaks about 6.4. I think this year, we had a peak of about 5.6 when you had some problems up on the north side, so that is occurring. We get in the year 2035, we're probably looking around 6 million gallons a day for your average. You could see peaks up around 11. And as we build into our full build-out, and especially when you get into the full west side, you can see you're up to about 12 million gallons a day on an average, and could even see peaks over 22 million gallons in that same timeframe or for that condition. Kind of a side note, once you have your water demands kind of determined, then you can also go back and do some estimations on populations or effective populations, and that's what we did. For 2015, we're probably looking at a city of about 25,000 to 29,400, and I think that fits right in with what the city feels you're at. I think 27,500 based upon water usage, sewage usage, landfill, that sort of thing. That's kind of where the city staff feels they're at. So we're right in the ballpark there. 2035, we'd be somewhere between 42,000 to 3,000 and 50,000. Again, that fits in very well with what was determined as part of your comp plan. I think 2035, the comp plan had it like at 44,000 or something like that. Where it gets a little bit hazier is now as we get into our full build conditions. And you can see, based upon the one map with expanded west side, you know, you could have an effective population somewhere between 87,000 and 100,000 people. Gets a little scary. And again, before we get into talking about the delivery system, like I said, we want to go back and visit just a little bit about your water supply. Water supply is a concern. I don't want anybody to get in a panic, but it is a concern. Right now, today, your current allocation from Southwest is 6 million gallons a day. And you can see, you're already seeing peaks of about 6 million gallons a day, so, you know, that's the amount of water you need today. Right now, there's plans to expand the plant to 18 million gallons a day, and, you know, with that, the city's allocation would probably be in that range of 9 to 10 million gallons. That type of water supply would get you through your 2035 conditions, take you up to about 50,000 people. Everything I know of, they've already started to order equipment for that plant expansion. I think it's, everything's in the works. I don't see anything that's going to delay that unless somebody else has heard anything else, but I think it's on schedule to be built, probably in the next two years. Isn't that what we're... So again, you know, water supply is a concern, but I think for the near term, it's going to be taken care of, and you should be able to take care of a population of about 50,000 people. It's when you get into those larger conditions, you know, those full build conditions with or without the expanded west side, you know, at 9 million gallons on average a day and peaks of 16 and a half, you know, you're going to start seeing some issues with water supply. So somewhere down the future, in the future, you're going to have to look at how you can increase that water supply. And I think, you know, it's just a matter of continuing to work with Southwest Authority on that. I think that will happen for the city, but you need to be aware of it. Again, the water usage rates that we determined, we use that to size the key components of the system and the delivery system. You certainly need to do some things for your system to be able to take care of some of these conditions. Again, you know, if you get into that ultimate population, you don't have a water supply that can support that yet. And I'll say that with a traditional system. And of course, with any kind of improvements comes costs. I know you guys are getting a little numb to these dollar amounts, they just keep appearing, it seems like, but... And these are based on 2014. I think that water main replacement is basically to take care of some of those fire flow issues within the core part of the city. You get into some of your capital improvements, you know, by the time we get all said and done, we're looking at about $84 million here to take care of some of the things that were being recommended by the plan itself. This is a map showing where the recommendations were showing for some of the easterly part of the city. Eventually, we need to get more water up into this portion of the city, so these highlighted lines are the extensions of those mains to do that. Also, we're seeing some extensions out to the west side to try and take care of some of the things that are happening on the west side of the city. Next map shows you what is being needed to take care of some of the development as it occurs to the south side of the city. This is your new finished water pump station. There's a bay being provided within that station for the pumps to pump water down to the south side of the city. They're not there yet. I think, you know, someday you could be able to put those pumps in and extend the water mains and so forth. And this takes care of a lot of places. You remember that one map where we had the red on the map that showed, you know, poor fire flows? That'll take care of these issues in this part of the city.
I have a question. You said there's a bay for the pumps.
Right.
If we put the pumps in, don't we still need additional water line to go?
Yeah.
Water lines aren't there.
Nope, nope. Nope, these pumps would need to be installed, the new finished water station, plus this piping and so forth. This shows you some of the highlights, some of the things we need to do to move water up to that north, the far north side of the city. Can just highlight in them. And then this shows you, again, you saw this earlier today, what we need to do to take care of that far west side. And Commissioner Steiner, like I said, number 10 is part of Leveney. 10 was actually the acquisition of the property for the storage facility. Like I said, there's a lot of effort went in. I think we've provided you a lot of good recommendations. There's many more recommendations within the study itself, but I think we can kind of sum it up like this. You need to closely monitor your water usage as you approach exceeding that average days and of over 10 million gallons a day. You're going to have to do some things to increase your water supply. With that, you just need to work very closely with Southwest. I think that'll all work itself out. There's certainly a lot of things that we need to construct, you know, use the master plan as a roadmap to do that. And I think if you do some of these things, you're certainly going to be able to maintain your vision statement, and you'll be able to take care of your customers from a water utility standpoint. And with that, I would gladly like to answer any questions you might have. We went through a lot of stuff in short order, but you've had a busy night here already.
President Johnson?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
If I could start with one thing, I guess the finished water pump station and all the piping won't be finished till next fall, so we'll still, this summer, we'll still have some water quantity issues. I just wanted to make sure the commission knew that, that this middle of summer, we still might have some conservation measures required before the finished water pump station's online.
And once that comes online, you'll be able to deliver a lot more water into your system. And especially, we'll be able to move a lot more water to the north, north of the interstate. Right now, you just have one way to get water up there. Now you'll have two, so it's going to make a huge difference in the system. And plus, you'll have more storage up there.
Yeah, if we get a hot, dry summer, we'll have water issues.
Correct.
It would take another cool, wet summer for us to avoid them.
Right. We have it all in place, it just won't quite be done until after the heat of the summer.
Right.
Like I said, it was still the right model to use to make recommendations to improve the system. There was no sense trying to do it with the existing. We needed to put those things in the model.
I just wanted the public to know.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
One more summer.
Yeah, we're not perfect yet.
Brant, just to give us a whole perspective on this, your projects were numbered 9, 11, 12, whatever. I assume 1 through 8 is what we have done and are currently doing?
No, not necessarily. 1 through 5 is water main replacements.
Okay.
Okay, the first three are the ones that we recommend you do. The other two are ones that should be done as you develop areas.
Okay.
To take care of some of those fire flows. And then the other ones, you know, we showed you trying to move, take care of things up north, to the south, and farther to the east. And then what you saw earlier, 9 deals more like, starting with 9 deals more with the west side.
Okay.
And we just, you know, we kind of picked a order, kind of how, you know, discussions with staff and so forth. As your city develops, if things don't happen to the east and they go more to the west, that's okay. You still have a plan what you have to do in the future to the east, but you also have a plan what you need to do to the west. It's just that you don't have enough water to do it all, yet.
President Johnson?
Yes.
I would just add, too, as we went over the capital improvement plan, I mean, we touched on 2015. We have projects for 16, 17, and 18 as well. Some of these recommendations out of the Water Utility Master Plan, as far as they relate to upgrading existing mains, we've had a lot of discussion as staff about, you know, what constitutes a capital improvement project, if it's a replacement project or a maintenance project versus a new project. And just so you're aware, those projects aren't included in the capital plan today. I think it's something we need to consider. You know, we probably won't have those for a 15 project, but in 16, if there's an upgrade of an existing main, we need to look at those in our capital plan as well.
That's true, yeah. I was pleased that you, you know, in your presentation, that you made the distinction between fire flows and, you know, regular water... and, you know, regular water delivery, that we have to be able to do more than just deliver water to people for their daily use. We have to be, also have the infrastructure that can fight a major fire, a prolonged fire. And that fire flow is a very, is a very important consideration when designing and constructing a water system.
You know, and here's an example, you know, Southwest Water doesn't provide fire flow.
Right.
They just take care of domestic use and things of that nature. It makes a huge difference, you know. The size of their system is nowhere comparable to what you need to do in order to take, provide those fire flows.
Right, yeah. And I know we've talked about it here often, but, you know, our, our equipment, our city firefighting equipment doesn't carry a bunch of water and then, you know, pump it onto a fire. They have to hook up to a hydrant and that hydrant has to be able, have the fire.
Ability.
Yeah, the ability to, for their equipment to function and so, yeah.
And, you know, just recently, we had one instance where you did fight a fire and we didn't think that the system was delivering the flow that the model said should be there. And we went back and retested and resimulated and under the different conditions, we were able to show that, yes, the system did deliver the fire flow that we thought it would from the modeling standpoint, so.
Yeah, but it all ties together. So when Mr. Zurov was, was referring to perhaps the summer of 2015 and if it's a hot summer, dry summer, you know, we'll have to put water restrictions on. We're always concerned about how much water we have in storage because if we drain our tanks down to a very low position so we can water lawns and then we have a major fire, now we have a problem that we may not have adequate water to fight that fire.
And I think with your new SCADA system, it's even going to be better. You're going to see, you can set those levels and say, wait a minute, this is staying for storage to fight fires.
Yeah.
And other than that, you got to go into some kind of other measure.
Well, are there other questions or comments? Now, as I understand, you are retiring the end of this year and this may be your last presentation to us?
Could be.
Could be, unless you come back in some sort of consulting role, I suppose, but.
My wife's been retired for seven years, like I told you, and she keeps saying, when are we going to do all these things you promised me?
Yeah.
But I will say this, the first presentation ever made to the city commission was standing in front of the Dickinson City Commission. And that was enjoyable and so was this.
Well, good. So your first one had to be quite some time ago.
Mm-hmm. Art was really kind to me.
Well, good. I hope we were equally as kind, so. Well, we wish you well in your retirement and hope that it's long and healthy and enjoyable.
Yeah, I do too, so, yeah, thank you.
President Johnson, I'd like to thank Brent for all the time you put into this and everything else for the city. I really appreciate it and I want to miss you.
I'm not moving away, but, and you will have my contact information because I'm sure you're going to have questions. I'll make sure that all your staff has asked any questions.
All right, great.
A lot of history that I'm well aware of here, the last two years, we've done a lot of things, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, well, I think we're down to reports and Mr. Kessel isn't here, of course, so Mr. Colleen, we'll let you report on whatever you'd like to. And if there's anything you want to defer, that's fine.
Mr. President Commissioners, I will just touch on a few of the reports that Mr. Kessel had for you. The first one is the budget adjustments, a special meeting. That meeting has been scheduled for December 30th at 2:00 PM. A notice, I think Ms. Spindstock will be sending out a notice to you as well as notifying the media and other interested parties. But would request that you would set that in your schedules for that meeting on December 30th. The revised organizational chart is in your packet. This is something that Mr. Kessel has been working on, especially in light of Mr. Corton moving on. Ms. Nomenek made some reference to this about just changing some of the organizational chart lines, lines of authority within City Hall and our city organization. Specifically, since we will not have a community development director, we will have a planning director that will move down a level and our building official that will move up a level. Our building and ground staff will be part of Public Works rather than community development. If you do have any questions or concerns regarding the organizational chart, please let me know or let Mr. Kessel know when he returns and I'd be happy to talk through those with you.
Mr. Colleen, I do have a question on this, this chart does, the way it appears to me is that Mr. Kessel in this organization would only have two direct reports.
Um.
Is that what he intends?
I don't believe that's, that's what is intended. I think that's an error on the software part. The, I wouldn't put any stock in the, the lines of authority of how they are shown in this document. All of the executive team members would still be direct reports to Mr. Kessel.
Okay, thank you.
The proposal. The next item of reports that Mr. Kessel had was legislative update. There are several attachments in your packet regarding legislative proposals. Senator Wardner has had his proposal out for some time now regarding surge funding and changes to the oil impact funding formula, the distribution of the gross production tax, as well as, I'm sure you're aware, Governor Dahl Rumpel gave his budget address last week and did include some jumpstart funding for oil impacted counties and cities, including hub city funding. I believe under both Governor Dahl Rumpel's proposal and Senator Wardner's legislation or proposed legislation, the city is scheduled to receive about $50 million in surge funding or jumpstart funding, which looks like it will be intended to be part of an emergency clause and we anticipate if the legislation passes, that that money would be available for the city as early as January. Allows us to get a head start on some of the design and the implementation of our capital improvement projects and the other funding proposals that you've seen tonight. Of course, with oil prices doing what they are, there is some concern with respect to how the oil production tax will be distributed and how that will be coming into the state over the next biennium. There is a chart in your materials that is, or was produced by one of the consultant firms that the state uses regarding price points for oil production and the varying areas, what the break even point is of varying areas of oil production. And at least according to the Moody Analytics report that the state is using, the North Dakota average break even point, somewhere around $35 or $40 per barrel because of the efficiencies that have been gained in the past few years regarding fracking in the Bakken. So the state will, I'm sure, continue to, to watch oil prices as they move, but at least at this point, we don't foresee a whole lot of changes in the legislation at this point as oil impact funding goes forward. The last report that Mr. Kessel had for you is with respect to mill levies. We did have mill levies established in Stark County for all of the property taxing authorities, county, the city, park district, the school. And those tax statements, I believe, went out this week. The city's 2014 mill levy is just under 50 mils, 49.86 mils for 2014 tax year. That compares to a 2013 mill levy for the city of 55.91. So for city mill property tax levels, we're going down a little over six mils as a city. Some of the other taxing entities have increased their mill levies and of course, assessments or appraisals for properties have gone up due to rising land prices and housing prices. But overall, it looks like the mill levy will go up just a little over a point for properties within Stark County and within the city. And I believe Mr. Hirschfeld, our city assessor, has prepared a memo for you that should be at your tables. Mr. Hirschfeld has some additional comments regarding mill levies. Have him make those down.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I thank you, Mr. Colleen, for the introduction. Mr. Kessel asked me to speak a little bit about the effect of the increase in mill levies. Taxes did just go out and what I'd found, I'll spot check in a few properties, is that, well, the current mill levy results in about $1,075 for a residential house for each $100,000 worth of property value. Commercial properties, every $100,000 of value generates about $1,195 of property taxes. The residential properties, it has us at about 1.075% or well below that 1.5% rural thumb average that I think we see nationwide that realtors use. As far as the effect to taxes, with a slight increase in mill levy combined with the increase of property values based off of last year's $100,000 property value for a home, they'd see about an increase of $50. So for a $200,000 house, it'd be $100 worth of taxes. Commercial's a little bit varied. Apartments and metal buildings saw a larger increase than the rest of the commercial properties did. So based off of their last year's $100,000, each $100,000 of property valued, has about $350 worth of tax increase. So if there was a 30% increase in the property value, you know, on a $300,000 property, that would be roughly $100,000 worth of property increase. That correlates back to that $1,195 worth of taxes. All other commercial properties had about a median increase of 7.5% to 10% and that results in roughly $135 of additional tax per $100,000 of property value. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld.
I do want to make a little caveat here that the assessing department doesn't typically work with tax disvaluations, as you're all aware, but just to let the public know that the taxes don't come from our department, so, thank you very much.
We know that. Anything else, Mr. Colleen, for reports?
Nothing else for reports, Mr. President.
And then we added item L, which is an addendum to the development agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. This is an addendum to the Pinecrest subdivision planned unit development agreement. This makes one change to paragraph 3A of that agreement. In the version that was approved by the commission, it placed some fairly strict limits on the numbers of R1 and R2 in mobile home units that would be allowed within the development. This addendum would remove those limits and simply apply the numbers as they would apply to ordinary zoning districts. So an R1 zoning district, I believe the minimum lot size is 75,000, 7,500 square feet. And the zoning map is included as, on the last page of the handout. Any areas within the Pinecrest subdivision that were zoned R1 could make use of that lot size designation for R1 lots rather than be limited pursuant to this agreement. Same would be true for R2 units and for the mobile home units. This addendum continues the limitation on R3 units. For the past several years, as you know, we've made limitations on the allocation of R3 units in all subdivisions and that limitation would continue under this addendum. Be happy to take any questions, if you have.
Any questions for Mr. Colleen? Not, is there a motion regarding this addendum?
I'll move, we approve the addendum for Pinecrest.
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Harry Dunn will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, I think that brings us down to tab six, engineering. And item A is a notice of award for Highway 22 landscaping. Mr. Kubis, you're introducing that item.
President Johnson, commission, the Highway 22 landscaping project, you may remember, earlier this afternoon, we talked about it. It's project number 17 on our capital improvement project prioritization list. It was a project that we had actually bid through the DOT this time last year. The bid came in quite high, considerably over our budgeted amount. At that time, we rejected the bids. It was a $259,000 bid. We had re-asked Ultech engineers to rework the plans, pare down some of the tree plantings that we had proposed originally. We rebid the project on November 14th. And just last week, we were given authorization from the DOT to award the project. The project was estimated this go-around at $150,000. The bid price came in at $128,999.40. The low bid, and I believe the only bid, was Snortum's Nurseries out of Granite Falls, Minnesota. Right now, we have a transportation enhancement grant through the DOT for $125,000, up to $125,000 with a 20% local share. So right now, Dickinson's share based on this bid would be $25,800. It's well below what we have in our, in our budgeted sheet in the CIP prioritization. So with that, in your packet, there is the notice of award, a form of contract and a form of contract bond and city staff recommends award.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. So really, the action for us is if we agree here with the recommendation is the contract approval?
Right now, it would be, the form of contract is our standard form of contract from the city. We'd just be recommending award, approval of the award, and then we'd send out the notice of award to the contractor.
Well, you've heard the recommendation. Any comments, questions? There be a motion either accepting or denying the recommendation?
Make the motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
We have the second. Any other discussion? Harry Dunn will vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Kubis, from you?
Not on that item, no.
Okay. Well, we've got item B and we have some engineering amendments to some KLJ projects and Assistant City Engineer Marshick will introduce those.
Good evening, President Johnson and Commissioners. The first item is a task order amendment number two to the 40th Street East project. This has to do with design changes and construction administration for the late season part of the project that we're doing up there. The original contract amount was for $828,550. The change order is in the amount of $223,939.16 and that would bring our new contract amount to $1,052,489.16. The staff recommends approval. Do you have questions for me on that item?
Essentially, what, what drove the changes? This is a change order add, right?
Right. Originally, we had designed the project, bid it out. We did not award that project. We did some other changes. That was our amendment number one. Now, when we came back to do this project from Second Avenue to get the connections in and do it late season here, this is what's driving these added changes for the second amendment.
Are there any other comments or questions? So the motion, if you agree, would be to approve the amendment regarding the 40th Street project.
I'd move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Chairman, I'm going to abstain from the vote on all four of these.
If there's no other questions or discussions, we'll vote on the motion. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
The next item is for task order amendment number two to the State Avenue street improvements. This has to do with design and construction administration for that project that includes the traffic pre- the traffic preemptive signals at the entrance to the new Public Safety Center and sewer improvements to aid in that project, especially with the Cooks' development to the east side. The original contract amount was for $884,500. The change order is in the amount of $106,114.98, which brings our amount to $990,614.98. The staff recommends approval.
And again, what are the changes in engineering or scope that?
When we originally went ahead with designing this project, the signalization wasn't included, so that has been put in. Also, some sewer that would be gravity-fed, and I think we would put offline a lift station that was put in by Mr. Cook that we weren't fully aware of at the time, and so the standards aren't up to our specifications. So this would allow us to take that offline and have a gravity system.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is for the State Avenue change order amendment. Is there a motion regarding this item?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Harry Dunn will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
The next item is the 21st Street West improvements. This is a task order amendment number two. This has to do with additional design and construction administration for the 21st Street West of the interim bypass. So going further west, we're tying into the existing street. So it has to do with that work. The original contract amount was for $818,850. The change order is in the amount of $165,386.11, which brings our new contract amount to $984,218.11. The staff, again, recommends approval.
And what were the unanticipated items that are driving this change order?
The width of the road tying in back west of 30th Avenue. Originally, we had the constraints of the street from the 30th back over to state, and we needed to add in, to tie in from the added number of lanes back into the two-lane rural section.
And that condition wasn't known at the time we?
Well, I don't think we thought about it at the time when we first entered into the contract to design that portion of the road.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, Mr. President, I understand that there's things that are overlooked, but we haggled about $100,000 on a prosecutor, you know, contract. And we just seem to be approving these oversights in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have projects now that are into 16% engineering costs. I understand they have to get done, but I just think a better job needs to be done.
I agree that we're trying to do a better job going forward on looking at what we need to do on these projects with the full scope and trying to get everything buttoned up at the beginning.
So the issue is our scope has been, in general, too narrow? Now, I understand, like, with the State Avenue one, there are changes there.
Some of these things that, it's hard for me to speak to some of them because I wasn't here in this capacity at the beginning of the project, but there's a lot of things that change as the projects go forward and these amendments take in those changes. So, you know, the preemptive signals, I don't know that we thought about that up front. And then as we start talking about the things that we need to do at the Public Safety Center, do we put it on that project in the design, or does it make sense to put it in with the street? We chose to put it in with the street project. So that's how some of these changes are coming about. It maybe isn't looked at with the original project, because as we're looking at things at a whole, it makes sense to put it on one other than another.
The 21st Street, that's, yeah, I understand that with State Avenue. The 21st Street West one, I'm not quite sure I understand.
You know, when we first talked about that street, I wasn't in on all of those initial planning meetings, but I think we were doing a wider section. And then we were paring the road down, and so there's some things to do to tie. It's a really large intersection there, and I think when we were first working with the DOT on 30th, nobody realized at that point how big that intersection was going to be, and then to try and handle it and match in would take some extra design. And some of these things were just getting to you. There are things that we've talked about, but we weren't able to get the contract amended till now.
President Johnson, if I could, I don't mean to speak out of turn, but I was acting in a different capacity, too, at the time the project was scoped. I actually put this agreement together to present to the city, and at the time, it was, just strictly speaking, about 21st Street was from 30th to State Avenue. I think that was put together early in '13, the original task order. The DOT project designing 30th wasn't completed yet, and I think that was bid out later that year, probably in April, I think. And so the project, it went from a one-mile project essentially between 30th and state to about a mile and a quarter project to tie back in west of 30th. So all the design details, I don't know. I haven't been involved in those either, but I know the project did grow by about 25% just in length because of that tie-ins.
And then also picked up the intersection, I suppose, through 30th. It, when you say it grew in length, it grew in length west of 30th?
Correct. It grew because the intersection that the DOT had designed was shifted considerably south of the section line or the section corner, about 65 feet. So to transition that back, now this project extends out to where the new west water tower is, about a quarter mile to the west.
And, and we're, so we're making an intersection, too, with 30th Street? And that wasn't in the initial engineering scope? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct. We were anticipating tying in.
Tying in.
At the section line.
Yeah.
And that wasn't the case, as the DOT constructed their project now, and it's a different condition.
All right. Well, that adds more clarity. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this change order amendment? Would there be a motion to either approve it or deny it?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Other discussion? Harry Dunn then will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
My last item is 15th Street West. This is a task order amendment number one, and this task order amendment is a result of modifications to services provided by KLJ. The original contract amount was for $685,000. The change order is in the amount of negative $380,500, which brings our new amount down to $304,500. We recommend approval.
So this is change order deduct?
Yeah, I thought I'd save that one till the end.
I understand why, but, so what's driving this, then?
You know, I don't have all the details, but I think it's changing to do with some surveying and some construction administration that we had initially anticipated them to do, and now it's being split between the two developers.
Okay. Well, we don't want to argue on this one, then.
No.
So is there a motion regarding this change order amendment?
Motion to approve.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, so this is a deduct. All right. Any other discussion? Harry Dunn will vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Kubis, you have some reports you'd like to make?
I do. Mr. President, Commission, recently, we've received a letter dated, actually, December 9th, and I apologize, it's not in your packet today, but the letter we'd received is from Roar's Developers, a formal request of the extension of our urban service boundary out towards Exit 56. They're also requesting an amendment to the 2035 future land use map. They're requesting municipal water and sewer services, and they're also requesting annexation of the I-94 corridor and the Exit 56 subdivision development. I think this letter is really a precursor to a formal submittal of a subdivision plat. They stated in their letter that they plan to make a submission to the city by December 20th to be on the February 18th planning and zoning meeting. And these requests will accompany a formal preliminary plat submittal. Right now, they had asked that, to apply for city services out to Exit 56. We don't have an application, per se, for city services typically. The plat comes in, if it's unannexed, it gets annexed, or it's requested to be annexed. We get a plat, we get civil engineering plans, we approve the plans, and they construct the infrastructure. We've seen these services on maps several times today. It's a significant project, especially on the water end, to get a redundant system. Mr. Mossam had shown that earlier, that we would be looking at, I think, about a half-a-dozen projects to get out there, including a half-million gallon storage reservoir, 12-inch main and 18-inch main, and looping it out towards 116th Avenue. So it's a significant project. I think the developer, in this case, has just wanted to get out in front of a planning and zoning preliminary plat with this formal recommendation. I think similar to a few months ago, when Barron's Vista came in and had requested an adjustment to the urban service boundary. At that time, we asked our water and sewer consultants, KLJ and Apex, to take a look at that. We've done that at a somewhat higher level through the comprehensive plan and the west-area plan in particular. I think at this time, if we're entertaining this, we need to take a detailed look at this and say, yes, absolutely, we can service this, or no, we can't. Or more than likely, the answer is somewhere in between, yes, we could service this area, but we need to do the half dozen or so projects that are identified in the Water Utilities Master Plan. So I can get a copy of the letter made available to all of you. Right now, I think the one issue that is probably most pressing is their anticipated date of needing or wanting these municipal services is December 1st, 2015. We've seen the numbers, just in dollars, anyway, of $25 million of water. I don't have an estimate on hand for what it would take to connect the sewer system to our municipal system, but it'll be somewhat significant. I would say easily in excess of $30 million. In the letter, they also state they would anticipate that the city pay for these trunkline services to the development. So a few issues. I mean, there's the detailed design of this, whether or not we can service it, and whether or not we can service it by, well, 12 months from now. So it's just a report right now. I anticipate in the next week, we'll have an update from Roar's and a formal submittal of a preliminary plat. I guess, maybe Mr. Cortan has something to add on the entitlement side of this.
With respect to the entitlement side, the comprehensive plan amendment to amend the future, the urban service boundary, that would have to go first. We have, we've only, we've done two of those. Our policy has been, we didn't want to mix in a preliminary plat or rezoning with a comprehensive plan amendment. The comprehensive plan is the long-range, it's the guiding document that we didn't want to be amended every month, to be amended quarterly. So our recommendation would be that that would be submitted first in February, and then, depending on the outcome of that, the preliminary plat would come in March. That would be our standard way of doing it, instead of running concurrently. That being said, from staff's perspective, we need to look at their proposal and provide, obviously, a recommendation, but based upon what you've seen today, if there's any insights that the commission would like to give staff, and the reviewing of that would be appreciated at this moment.
Well, I think the most compelling thing that we learned today is it was going to be $75 million to do the loop to bring on that, which, you know, we were looking at years down the road, and that was beyond our 2035 plan. As I understood it, as we talked about it today, was, the discussion was, that was after everything else filled in here and we moved out there. But, you know, that exit will come online prior to all of that.
Yeah, I think the most, you know, the difficult thing is looping the water. You could run a water line out there and service them, but they wouldn't have any redundancy. It's a lot of risks, so you have the loop, you have a much more stable water supply. The sewer is in the area, and that's probably less costly, but I think if I'm hearing Mr. Kubis correctly, you think it's probably $30 million or a little more than $30 million, really, to bring proper water and sewer to Exit 56?
That's correct. I believe the projects that were listed for the west area are really all the projects we would need to build our, the backbone of our water system out to Exit 56. And that was, I think, $25.8 million. I didn't catch the number for the sewer, but I know it's been identified as a project. It would be a gravity sewer main following Duck Creek that would tie into Highway 10. So we do have sewer out in the area, but we have about a mile, maybe a little bit more, of gravity main, another interstate bore. And again, you know, we don't have specific plans. We're just drawing lines on a map right now without right-of-way corridors or utility easements to place these, so those numbers can vary a bit, too.
The Duck Creek sewer is estimated between $8 and $10 million to bring it down to Highway 10.
So it's in round numbers. We're looking at $35 million, you know, plus or minus a little bit, but that would be a pretty decent ballpark estimate right now.
Correct.
You know, to say that this is a unique annexation request would be an understatement. I can think of 10 or 15 pieces of information that, regardless of how each one of us might feel tonight about this, that we just need the information. You know, what exact boundaries do they want annexed? Maybe you have a map already? I don't know.
We didn't receive an annexation map, but what they referred to was the I-94 corridor. They had met with staff, and we'd talked about annexing really what would be the entire West Ridge development. I think at this time, it sounded like, based on our conversations, they weren't interested in doing that right now, so when I think they refer to an I-94 corridor, it's the I-94 right-of-way.
Yeah. Well, we need to tie that down, know for sure what they would like to see. We might like to see something different. You know, we've got a head start on the costs for infrastructure, but I think we need to further the analysis on fire and police considerations, see where we are there. Street considerations, street maintenance.
Right.
We need to analyze that more. I also think we need to know more about what their, what their proposed... what their proposed development is. We might not normally ask that question with as much scrutiny as I think we should with this request. I think we need to know how big the area is, what kind of facilities it might be. I think we should even try to put some numbers on property tax revenue that might come from this development. I think this just deserves a lot more scrutiny than...
And one thing that wasn't discussed, too, Commissioner Jackson, you brought up street maintenance, but the water and sewer maintenance required the additional staff needed and solid waste. We haven't brought up that. Additional staff needed for all that, in addition to fire and police and administration staff.
Yeah, I think if we give it some more thought, there's a lot of information that we'll need, and some of it we and our consultants will have to come up with, but some of it they should be coming up with for us.
I think from staff's perspective, or at least from community development's perspective, to get ahead of it and get our arms around it, the initial direction that we provided to the applicant would be to submit the annexation, which, okay, they have partially submitted it at this point. Submit a complete one, bring it in front of the commission, let the commission decide if they're going to accept that, and then based upon that, then come back and address the other issues. But I think the first step in all of it is going to be, are you in favor of the annexation at this time, based upon all the issues that we've discussed thus far today? And if not, then it would need to be developed at a rural nature, and that's another issue all within itself. Because their their initial proposal is to have it at an urban nature, sewer, water, and roads. Depending on the outcome of your decision, would base it on, are those urban services going to be provided at their date? And if not, then then come back with a rural development that could still match that. You could still have a proposed truck stop developed at rural nature. It's just not going to be the same intensity as you would for an urban one as well.
You know, I'd like to know if there's other commercial development and anticipated, if there's residential development that they're planning out there. I don't know any of those things.
And they do have some maps as far as their anticipated land use. And I don't think there was residential in that, in that development.
Just a summary of it, they had proposed 66% to be general commercial, 17% to be light industrial, 14% general industrial, and then 3% as other, and that would include parks and ponds. From our perspective, we've looked at it to be a PUD because we do not have a zoning for it. We don't have the highway designation. That would be after the Wes Dickinson Plan was done. But we do have concerns with respect to the industrial side of that. That is not matching up to what we were talking about. I think that those could be alleviated. Talking to the applicant, I think what they're proposing are more, what I would call, more intensive commercial uses that are geared towards truck and repairs that would be classified as industrial. But as long as they're within a building and so forth, I think that would fall well within the intent of what we're looking at, not the storage of outside materials and things. I think we could resolve those issues.
It's a very large project, the undertaking of just the utilities. Now, we haven't talked streets here, this is just requesting utilities. I guess when the full bypass would be built, we'd have our second access and redundancy on, you know, emergency response access points. But right now, we really would only have one. It would be for paved access would be 116th when the exit would be completed, anticipated around the same timeframe here, December 1st, 2015. So just totaling up the projects we had in 2015, it was about $65 million of CIP projects that didn't include this roughly $35 million. So it'll be important from a, you know, public work standpoint, an operations standpoint, fire and PD, but just in our overall budgeting for 2015. If it's moving forward in 2015, there's a chunk of dollars that we need to reallocate there. There's any other questions on this proposal?
Please, I think we're going to lose a city commissioner here. Commissioner Altman had informed me that he has to leave at 6:45, and I think it's that time or thereabout. So we'll let the minutes show that Mr. Altman departed at 6:45. Thank you. So, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Kubis.
No, you should be losing a city engineer here shortly, too. I think I might have the same program. Just wanted to give a quick recap. Earlier today, we did go through the CIP list. We didn't get into any other future years, just looking at 2015. I think general consensus was the projects we had listed and the prioritization, we had them listed in, with general consensus that this was a good direction, a good prioritization of the projects. I would add that we talked about prioritizing DOT projects, specifically big regional projects on the state highway system or interchange-type projects. We have received, like I'd mentioned, that formal solicitation from the DOT on our, on our request for those types of projects. That's due in January. And I felt like we did a lot of back and forth on the DOT projects, and maybe it would be valuable if we would come back, say, the first meeting in January, just to re-solidify that we're all on the same page with, between staff and the commission on those projects. And then there's a formal, or a form that the DOT has, cities use to request those projects. I think at that time, we'll make sure we're all on the same page because there are, again, big projects, $50 million projects that we talked about for about five minutes. So I'd like to make sure we're definitely on the same page with those projects.
I think in that first meeting in January, if you can put on a piece of paper your, the priorities as you now interpret them, so we get a chance to see those and can talk about them and either bless them or change them.
With that, I think we've talked a lot of projects today. Don't have any, any other project updates? If you have any questions for the city engineer, I'd be happy to take them now.
Anything for the engineer? All right, we'll go to Public Works. You, Mr. Zurov, you have several bids here that you want to bring to our attention?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson, Commission. As you're aware, the city is going in the direction of a fleet, so this is the first year we bid, put out bids for multiple vehicles that would be used in our fleet. The exact number of each piece of equipment is part of our capital purchases. So the backhoe, a Bobcat, fleet sedans, pickups from half-ton to one and a half-ton, were part of our capital purchases. And Brent Coulter, our street fleet manager, put out bids for the respective pieces of equipment. And one of the things unique about this year's bid, too, talking, he did discuss it with Attorney Kolding, is that these bids will be good for two years. Now, one thing I don't know, is that biannual or biannual? So I don't know if biannual is twice a year, or, I think it's biannual. Anyway, these bids are good for two years. And so enclosed, you'll have the recommendations from Brent and Public Works on accepting the bids. Do we want to go through each one separately, I suppose? First bid we have is for a backhoe loader. After reviewing all bids, the Fleet Department of Public Works recommends award to Butler Machinery for the purchase of a new backhoe loader with breaker for a price of $88,150.
Okay, and these are for 2015 purchases?
Correct.
And...
16.
16?
These bids are good for 2015, 16. Right now, we have permission through our capital purchases to buy a backhoe in the 2015, year 2015.
Okay, that was my question. That's in the, are any of these not in the budget? These four that we're going to go through?
No, they're all in the budget. It's just the quantity that's not exactly going at the time.
So we've got the backhoe, and low bid is Butler, and they meet the specs.
Correct.
So are there any questions regarding this item? Is there a motion?
How move we approve the bid?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the bid. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none on the vote, then, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries.
Next one?
The Bobcat?
Yeah, I don't see it in here, but the... I guess I don't have the Bobcat one in here. Do you have the Bobcat or the Bapcat? I don't have, Brent has a copy of the Bobcat.
I do have the Bobcat bid. The Bobcat bid, Mr. President and Commissioners, is actually a piece of equipment for our new water treatment plant. This is a sole source item, as it's an all-wheel steer unit and only be obtained from one manufacturer.
It is included in the packet, I didn't look in here. So it is on the...
Yep. Also attached to the Bobcat bid is a trailer that'll be used to carry the Bobcat from one location to another and haul its attachments. The bid price that we received for the Bobcat was for $76,148.28, and the bid price for the trailer is $6,150 for a total of $82,290.28. That's a full package deal. As far as what it will be used for at the plant, this is a smaller piece of equipment. It's got numerous implements that will come with it. So it will not only serve as a small loader, but it will also be used with the mower, forks, snow blower, and a snow pusher.
And this will be, this piece of equipment will be taken out of the water reclamation project?
Yes.
So it's been included for approval?
Question, I mean, I'm having trouble with the math. You know, I see total of all items quoted roughly $101,000, and then you've got $4,500 for freight charges, and I don't know what dealer PDI means. And then they give us a government discount of nearly $15,000, and it comes down to $76,000, and it looks to me like their, their math is off by $10,000.
Actually, Mr. President, there's two discounts. There is a government discount of $14,732.
Oh, they're identical, that's why.
And there's the West Plains discount, same amount.
I'm good to go. So what you, what you want is the approval on the Bobcat and the trailer?
Yes.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I just had, what was our budget on? Did we have one?
Not specifically on the, on the water reclamation facility. We had a lot of contingency for additional equipment.
This is part of the water reclamation?
Water reclamation, and change orders and contingencies. We've used very little. There'll be, we'll have this purchase also. There'll be additional purchase required, which we had budgeted through that project for a tanker and for our sledge, sledge injection of the property. So that'll, that should be our last piece of equipment we buy for that facility, because we have purchased lab equipment and everything else. After this, it should, that should be the last piece that we had.
I'm assuming this is eligible for SRF financing?
Correct, this, I'll go through the SRF financing and actually include it as part of our rate structure.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Seconds.
There's a motion, a second, other discussion. Hearing none on the vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries.
Since you're up there, Brent, you can go ahead with the additional vehicles.
Mr. President and Commissioners, included in your packet, the last of the items, the half-ton through the one-and-a-half-ton pickups, we're going to be, the city is currently going through a fleet right now. And at the rate of our growth, we're starting to update. We have been short on fleet vehicles over the last, I'd say, probably two years, and we're trying to play catch-up right now. After talking with Attorney Kolding and Mr. Zurov, we came to the conclusion that it would be in our best interest and the city's best value if we could get our prices locked in for a period of two years. And also pool our buying power as a city whole rather than going by department by department. There's going to be a number of half-ton pickup trucks, three-quarter ton trucks, one tons, and there are two, ton and a half trucks that have been approved for the 2015 budget year. So what we had the dealers do, and they were all three of the local dealers, was give us their best prices on standard cab, extended cab, and crew cab pickup trucks in all those weight classes. Within your packet, you'll see all of our recommendations. You'll note that the half-ton, three-quarter ton, well, I'll do them one at a time. The half-ton pickup bid that came back was for a half-ton pickup, four-wheel drive, standard, extended and crew cab. Charbonneau came in with the lowest bid with the half-ton Ram 1500, standard cab at $24,200, extended cabs at $25,600, crew cabs at $28,600. Also, as a part of this package, and it was an option that was not required, but it was offered in the bid for an additional amount of $2,400 and, or $2,447 for each vehicle that we purchased, we buy, we would get an extended bumper-to-bumper 10-year, 120,000-mile warranty. That's not something that is typically standard in most fleets. Our desired cycle time is going to be 10 years or 100,000 miles. So for an additional $2,400, we would get the major coverage on the vehicles while we had them in our fleet.
So our recommendation would be to accept that and approve the $2,447, 10-year, 120,000-mile warranty?
So on pickups, you've got a half-ton and a one-and-a-half-ton?
The first page that you're looking at is a half-ton.
You have a half-ton, three-quarter ton?
One-ton and ton and a half. So there's three different weight classes of pickups in front of you?
I, I think for us, but at least for me, what I would want you to explain is, you know, you have a low bidder, for example, on the one-ton that you say doesn't meet specifications.
Yes, Mr. President. Saks Motors did submit a bid.
How do they not meet specs?
In their bid packet, a lot of the requirements or specifications that we call for in our standard pickups, they do not offer on their pickup. So they had crossed those specs off in the bid pack and offered them at an additional price on a sheet that followed that would have added to their bid price. So as it sits, their factory vehicle does not meet specs.
They could meet specs, but not with a standard product. They had to...
Correct, they would have to take it outside to have those items installed.
And when they did that, then they became a higher bid. That's correct.
Yes.
So...
A good example of this was last year when we did our individual bids for purchase. I know Ford came in at the lowest bid. This year, when we redid this bid for this 2015 year, if you'll notice, Ford, with the exception of the ton and a half, exception of the ton and a half, they are at the upper end of the bracket.
Okay.
So.
I just, what I'm trying to get at here now is, for all but the one and a half-ton pickup, you're recommending Charbonneau. For the ton and a half, you're recommending Parkway.
Yes, sir.
And these are all low specified bidders?
Yes.
You're not recommending anyone, or you're, you don't have someone that met specifications that isn't getting the bid?
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Jackson?
Can you give us a feel for how many pickups will be bought under this, these bids for the next two years? Are we talking five or 20, or?
Well, we can say, tell it for one year. The capital purchases for this year, you know, like I said, I know we have one, one backhoe, two sedans for sure. One of the things, some of the capital purchases that were approved, there was some discussion on what pickups go where, but as far as half-ton pickups, I think three?
Six.
Six? Okay. Three-quarter ton pickups, I guess maybe you have the numbers. I thought there were two. I thought there was only three of the half-ton. And then one and a half-ton, I believe there's just one.
But you're, you're not proposing to buy any more than were specified?
Correct.
Correct.
It's only the budgeted amount.
In the capital purchases that was budgeted, in dealing with the city administrator Kessel, those what were approved, and we're looking at all departments, not just the course of work.
Right. And, and what you're asking us to approve here is the acceptance of these quotes?
Correct.
You're not asking for authority to go buy 10 of this or three of that right now? The quantities were approved in the budget, that's.
Right, they are, the quantities are in budget.
Yeah. Okay. Are we all clear?
This is essentially just.
Some discussion on quantities that I need to deal with Mr. Kessel on, but quantities are in budget.
Well, that's another item. If you come back to us, that would have to be, in a sense, an amendment to the budget.
Right. And we're still working for that. This is just for specified, budgeted vehicles.
So, I, we're just being asked to approve the bid, the bid amounts?
That's correct, Mr. President. Just be acceptance of the, the bid offers.
And these are for item four, the pickups ranging from a half-ton to a ton and a half. Would there be a motion to approve those bid amounts?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, the vote, Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. That leaves us with the fleet sedans, right?
Yes, sir. On the full-size four-door sedan, there was another situation. Saks did submit a bid for $19,613. That sedan also did not meet specs. It would have required additional.
What did we specify that the Impala wouldn't meet?
I don't have that list in front of me right now, but I can provide that later.
I mean, an Impala is a pretty decent car.
Yes, it is.
Why would we spend $4,300 more for another model?
There were certain things that we put in as, for safety items, like the rear reverse sensors. Those were not offered, those were offered in the other two vehicles that were bid. Fog lights. There's a long list of stuff in there that was not offered.
What's a reverse sensor?
When you're backing up, if somebody is to walk in behind you, or there's obstruction within six feet of your bumper, it gives you an audible alarm inside the cab and gives you time to hit the brakes.
So, this, these are sedans?
Correct.
These are mainly for, like, highway use?
Around town, in the highway. The same thing that our current sedans are being used for.
Do we have those backup sensors in those?
Yes, sir. One of the reasons why I spec those inside the bids for these vehicles is, if you look at WSIs findings, just about 80% of the accidents that they have for vehicles is backing.
Thank you.
I'd rather not see the fleet get tore up after we start buying new units, so. Incidentally, there is an Impala that does meet the specs, but not at this price.
Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding the sedans? Well, what we need is a motion either to reject the recommendation or to accept it.
I'll move we approve.
I'll second.
We got the motion to accept the recommendation, the second. Any other discussion?
Just ask the same question. I assume that when adding the items to the Impala, you said there was an Impala, that it was a higher bid.
As you can see from the other two prices, both of them from different manufacturers and different dealers, there's not that much of a degree of separation in them, because those vehicles actually, both of them do meet all the specs.
You are correct that a very high percentage of the accidents are backing up. Our experience is recommendations, some large firms and so on, employees that get into accidents due to backing up pay their deductible, and you wouldn't believe the amount of accidents declining when they back up.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other comments, questions? So, we have the motion to accept the recommendation. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Mr. Zurov, any project updates you want to give?
No, I think we've covered about everything today. I guess, as we went through the upcoming projects, President Johnson and Commission, though, I thought of the projects we've done this year, and we've done an enormous amount of infrastructure projects this year, and someday we can, I know you've looked at a lot of them, but there's a, it's going on, and I'm excited for the next year, I guess. If you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Does anybody dare to have any questions at this late hour? Okay, we'll ask our questions at another meeting. We'll go to community development, Mr. Kurtan.
Mr. President, Commission, tonight we have a future land use amendment from residential to public civic. This is the second reading. There is no change from the first reading. It is located in the southwest, southeast corner of 40th Street Southwest and Highway 22. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kurtan. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1568. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, you may do so now. Come to the podium, and we'll hear your comments. No one left from the public, so they don't care to comment. Any comments or questions by commissioners?
I'll move we approve, second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Any other items, Mr. Kurtan?
No, Mr. President, I do want to thank the commission. It's been a pleasure and honor serving you the last three and a half years, and I look forward to my next assignment.
Well, Mr. Kurtan, as we said one meeting ago, we really appreciate the contribution you've made to our community, and that contribution will have a long life to it. If things don't work out where you're going, call us back, okay? We'll see what our situation is. From the commission perspective, we have Mr. Kessel's performance review. I'll just report to the public that all commissioners did fill out a performance review for Mr. Kessel. We review, I think it's seven items, leadership, management, job knowledge, communication skills, professional development, relationship building with city employees, and relationship building with community. And commissioners are asked to rate him in terms of, or rate the performance, evaluate the performance in terms of does not meet any expectation, meets expectations, or exceeds expectations. I'll just quickly report that Mr. Kessel did not receive any does-not-meet expectations, and in terms of these factors that I mentioned, received eight meets expectations and 27 exceeds expectations. This is a slightly stronger evaluation than, than the one received in 2013, and 2013 was a good one. I, I won't have anything more to say about that, other than I have discussed the evaluations with Mr. Kessel, presented them to him. He has copies of each of the individual reviews, and I would assume, if you haven't already, in the future, each of you will express your views to him. Along with that, then, we have an employment contract, and, and last year, we approved a three-year employment contract, but Commissioner Altman's and I reviewed the employment contract and its compensation, and we're, we're recommending that we approve a new three-year employment contract, which is essentially the same as last year. But the reason we're, there are some differences, and the major one is, in prior years, and for quite a period of time, the city has, has paid a vehicle allowance to the city administrator and other senior officials. We're trying to eliminate the vehicle allowance, and, you know, we've had some issues with it, with the IRS, and so, in this contract, Mr. Kessel does not receive a vehicle allowance. His salary is increased to $134,000, which is, I think, a six-and-a-half percent increase. And we've added a new clause where he would receive additional compens, contributions to a retirement plan that would be equivalent to the $6,000 vehicle allowance that he received. So, there, that is a change, and as long as we're making a change like that, I, it would be my recommendation that we just approve a new three-year contract that would commence January 1st here of 2015. Now, Mr. Keling, did I do a halfway decent job of covering the contract? What did I miss, or what do you need to correct?
No corrections, Mr. President. I think that was a fine summary.
That was a half-decent job, huh? Okay. So, any comments or questions by U.S. commissioners? You know, you all recognize that these are extraordinary circumstances for a city, you know, to be trying to manage its affairs in, in the Bakken. You heard Mr. Zurov mention, you know, the number of infrastructure projects that we've done this year, plus the number we have kind of ongoing, whether it's in design or construction. There's a lot, you know, there's just a lot of stress to all of us living in the Bakken and managing our, our, our business lives and our private lives here in the Bakken. I think in general, Mr. Kessel's done a very good job, along with his entire staff. And you all pretty much noted that one way or another in your, your comments, but, so, I'm, I'm asking that, that there be a motion to approve his employment contract.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, discussion?
Just to echo what you've said, Mr. Mayor, Sean is no more perfect than the rest of us, but the public needs to know how many hours he works, just how hard he works at this job, and, and there's a lot of staff that are working longer hours than you might think they are. I know that, but he's working very, very hard.
Well, we have the motion and the second. Any other comments? Hearing none, then we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do U.S. commissioners have any other issues? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? Not, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay, motion carries, we're adjourned.